It says start and stop.
Now you're on camera saying.
Okay.
Okay.
For the twelve of the London Planning Board's regular meeting, March twelfth, two thousand fifteen. The order at seven oh nine.
At the fire station.
At the fire station. And we'll start with a roll call.
Tom McGinn.
Ryan Hay.
John Durkendron.
Roger Moran.
Bob Coon.
Rich Gaddam.
Marie Gerstein.
Todd Redway. We need to approve the agenda. On the agenda tonight, we have the approval of minutes from February twenty eighth and from March third.
February twenty sixth and March fifth.
Well.
Yeah.
I was reading what she gave me.
No.
February twenty sixth and March fifth.
You printed it out from the email.
That's right.
My dad did.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and run the bus. Sorry about that.
Where's the corrected dates?
With corrected dates.
Twenty sixth and March fifth.
And location?
Yes.
We have another one sent to you.
We have a pending application for AIM recycling. Item one, item two is a zoning map change. The new application for Champion Auto Body and some proposed ordinance changes, a review of the Alfred Road District on one eleven. A review of the proposed annual sign performance standards. And item three is a review of a request to incorporate self-storage units in the proposed DB two. Then we will be having the planners report. As a point of interest, we, items number one and two, AIM recycling and the zoning map change. Will end up being tabled because there's nobody here.
Do you hear?
Yes, sir.
If I could elaborate on that, there, it's not that they're not here, they've asked to be tabled. AIM is asked to be tabled.
Okay.
Um, because I have essentially, the town engineers reviewing certain aspects of the stormwater drainage. Because stormwater drainage will not be done by D E P in time for this, this department, this board's decision-making process. So Woodruff and Kern is reviewing that. They're also reviewing the blasting plan for your request. They're also reviewing the request that was made on the impact on adjacent wells. There's been one hydrogeologist that's been out there, uh, main blasting and drilling has made a report. Uh, that's been forwarded to Woodruff and Kern. They are evaluating that right now. Um, they will get their study done probably next week. And AIM had said, let's wait for the, uh, the peer review. When that's done, then we can proceed. So essentially, they asked to be tabled until the peer review is completed.
Thank you. Okay, so just, it's AIM that has to be tabled, not the zoning change, right?
AIM asked to be tabled, uh, that would just happen too hard.
Right.
And the zoning change, we haven't received anything. I've, I've informed Al, you know, about what your request was and, uh, since he's the agent for Bud. Um, but I haven't got any maps back on that. He's probably working on that right now. As you recall, the things that I asked him to do was to extend that, first of all, change the R P and the S O labels. Because they're right now N R C instead of R P. Uh, to change those labels, to extend that, the R P line along the natural course to the wetlands on that land, on that parcel of land that Bud has. As you recall, it just didn't return into a boundary line and it didn't make, didn't conform at all to existing conditions in the field. Um, second thing I asked him to do is, third thing I asked him to do is also to provide those GPS and digital coordinates. So we can coordinate that with the, uh, with the map. I've talked to a consultant on G I S, G I S consultant. And have this zone change that we're gonna have to be doing, we need to do the line change, get that done with a public hearing and all the public notices. So he's on notice on that. I met with him yesterday. So, um, all we need is to get that information in.
The one other, I think I read in your document, you asked that they removed all of the proposed house uses and.
Yeah, for proposed house uses, also to extend the R P zone. Because that, from Beaver Dam down into the S O district on the, on the north side, that's really just a, that's a stream. That is not a wetland situation. So that's a stream and that should be in the R P district. So.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move to amend the agenda to drop pending applications.
Motion's been made and seconded.
Yeah.
Motion's been made and seconded to drop pending applications. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion is unanimous.
I have the motion to approve the agenda. We just dropped, yeah, we dropped the pending application, but we had other changes. The location, the dates of the minutes, February twenty sixth and March fourth. So I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second that.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve as amended. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion unanimous. First item of business, the minutes of February twenty sixth. And if you remember, this was on table from the last meeting, so we could get the findings of fact put in.
I will motion, make a motion that we approve the minutes as written. I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes of February twenty sixth. All those in favor?
Discussion, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I have two diminutive changes. Uh, page three. Under therefore be it resolved, item one, no certificate of occupancy should be, shall be issued or. Um, also on page five. Uh, under new applications, last word should be weeks. Tabled for. Page five, five, new applications, last word.
Your eyes were shot.
Yeah. That's what we're trying to do.
I'm questioning.
No, it doesn't.
I'm questioning that February twenty sixth and March fifth says regular meeting. I'm wondering if one is special meeting.
March fifth was.
Special meeting.
The special meeting.
So March fifth's special.
Are there any other changes?
Move to approve as amended. Oh, wait a minute.
We had a motion.
Yeah. So we had a motion.
So I will, um, read my motion to include those two minutes.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to.
Second with the amendment, sorry.
Yes, with the amendments. Is, is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Yeah.
All those opposed? Motion is unanimous. So to March fifth. You know, the first thing that we need to look at is that it should be drafts minutes of a special meeting, not a regular.
I, I have a small change, but I don't know if you want to give motion first. Under, um, item three, third paragraph starts A R D. Uh, can't make a motion until it's complete in D B one, D B two and timehouse form. I don't know what that's about.
I've been looking for a motion to approve A R D so that we could move forward.
So can't make a motion to approve, a motion what?
Yeah, because we hadn't looked at the sign section.
The guardings signs until.
Yeah, what is, what does that actually mean?
I don't even remember the discussion.
Part of it was that you're gonna have an eight-foot side in one section, you're gonna have a fifteen-foot side in another section. And then. We're talking about having them all the same.
We're talking about the motion and what's on the minutes.
We made a motion for the fifteen-foot side for the A R D.
Yeah, but Tara, we said it was gonna be all the same, but we never decided on where it was gonna be.
It's specifically on the tape.
I remember correctly. I mean, that's part of this, but if you read this sentence here, we don't know what it means. We came up first and the second sentence is kind of what you're talking about.
Please repeat what you need clarity on.
The whole first line, A R D can't make a motion until it's complete, until what's complete?
Until it's decided in D B one and D B two and timehouse form.
What is decide?
Yeah, what's deciding we're making a motion on?
Yeah, I think we need to.
Table it, table it now.
Digital side inches and. And, yeah, or was it about the?
No, not the list.
We're gonna, we're gonna table this to the next meeting so that Marie can.
Clarify.
Clarify at first.
Sorry, I did.
No, that's okay.
That's a good point.
I can't, I can't.
I remember the discussion, but I have no idea.
Yeah.
We were trying to finalize it and couldn't.
Okay.
Anything else?
Nope.
The rest of the change, I've got it.
Onto new applications. Champion Auto. Major conditional use permit, proposal to construct a four thousand square foot addition in existing auto repair. With the proposed site regrading and parking area reconfiguration and box trailer storage relocation by two point one seven acre site located at sixteen seventeen Portland Road. Tax map twenty nine lot two twenty P in the C C S district. Mario Burnett is the owner applicant and Paul Gadboy is the owner's agent. Ask if you would like to make a presentation.
I assume I should be over here someways?
Yes.
I'll just sit in front of.
Make the scenery a little bit better.
He's gonna turn the camera.
We'll assume they've seen it.
You guys move if you want.
Oh, it's a lovely photograph.
I'll take his chair.
Keep him warm for it.
Right.
Okay, can I play see that?
Yep.
My name's Paul Gadboy, so I'm doing the site plan for, uh, the applicants. The applicants are here this evening. I'll bring in any questions that the board may have. Again, as you said, we're, the applicant wants to construct a four thousand square foot building, uh, in turn to add seven new bays to, uh, do, uh, bodywork on, on, automobile bodywork. Currently, the existing building has six bays. This new building will have seven bays for a total of thirteen bays in order to, uh, do bodywork. According to the ordinance, I, I use the automobile repair guidelines for parking. Says you need three spaces per bay, so thirteen bays will be thirty-nine spaces. I assume I can count the spaces inside the building as thirteen and I really need the additional, or whatever that is, thirty-nine minus fifteen, twenty, twenty-six exterior parking. I assume you can use the inside parking as a.
I'm not sure about that, Paul.
I guess that's what I'm trying to.
We've never had.
Really? Well, it doesn't seem to make much sense to me, but.
Well.
Because it is a parking spot.
Well, the other, the other thing is, this is, this is actually different. Because. You're. Per bay, you don't need actually, in the field, you don't need three parking spots because you aren't gonna have three different people per bay. Times all those bays.
Sydney, waiting for it, kind of.
They aren't, they aren't waiting.
Yeah. Same as auto repair is what you're saying.
Yeah.
So, you can't, you're saying I can't use interior parking spaces?
Uh, there's no need for it.
We haven't, but I don't know, we don't have a standard for this, though, do we have?
Uh, we have, we have.
Auto repair.
That's all we have, is auto repair. We don't have that, that extensive.
Use, right.
Yeah, this is not the I T V. We don't have that extensive of a number.
Right. Well, I, I would say, why don't you continue and the board can discuss.
Okay, I guess that's one of the issues, because if we could use, count those as parking spaces, then the thirty-nine spaces, this area right here, exterior spaces plus the interior, that would constitute the thirty-nine spaces. Um, I do have, um, on this, uh, plan, parking spaces, we do have thirty-nine exterior proposed. However, we're trying to limit the pavement. The pavement of these, this area, um, could actually, uh, you know, make the product cost, not cost effective for the gap to move forward. So if I, I'm trying to say I wouldn't like to pave this area, worst case scenario, we pave the area where the twenty-six spaces would be, put thirteen exterior spaces and limit the pavement to that. The applicant can just not pave any of it, if you want to understand, but.
Yeah.
The ordinance is pretty clear that over fifteen trips, that you have to, or fifteen parking spaces, you have to pave. We'd like to keep the display area gravel, not have to pave that. And then, you know, obviously, I may even be able to cut this pavement down where it actually gets painted on the new building for cars to come in and they can park, still be entirely on pavement. If I can't count the interior for parking, now I'm moving the additional thirteen spaces somewheres else and that would, uh, obviously.
We have a max, we have a max impervious surface issue, don't we?
No, actually, uh, I'm not adding any new impervious. We are at sixty, uh, sixty-four percent mark coverage.
So you're not gonna take any more non-impervious.
No, not, yeah. You can see, you know, this is actually edge of the gravel right here, the edge of field, which is edge of gravel, this is edge of gravel. This is actually, this is actually cars parked right here right now and these vehicles parked here right now. So I'm not really going to be adding impervious.
That was kind of what I wanted to ask you about, Paul. How many spaces do you have going up on the right-hand side of the main building, right through there?
Um, I did write that down somewhere, let's see there. This is, uh, four, fifteen and fourteen, twenty-nine spaces right here.
Right, and then you've got the other spaces up on the side, which you have labeled as overflow parking. You've got another dozen spaces up there.
Correct.
So you, you're pretty close to the total number that you need right now.
Yes, I guess, but, um, if I can't use the interior parking area, count that as the legitimate parking. Then the ordinance states that I'd have to pave all this section.
Okay.
And obviously, the applicant's trying to minimize pavement, so that was just one of the questions. I thought you could use the interior bay as a parking space, but.
So just getting back to this question at the front, is there twenty-nine spaces?
There's twenty-nine spaces here, so I got two other spaces here, which will end up being handicapped or whatever, so there's thirty-one spaces plus the thirteen. I got a total of thirty-nine, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-nine, thirty-nine spaces.
There's nothing else I can fill in, I feel.
No, huh? So your interpretation is you can't.
Medical facility?
All right.
Library? Motor vehicle sales?
I mean, I don't know what the applicant's.
Can you read, can you read? The one again, how did, how did they phrase it?
Parking spaces. Parking spaces are provided conform with the number required, with the number required in the following schedule, this is seven, six, C, three, G. And the first one on the, at the top of this is automobile repair garages and gas stations. And it's three spaces for each bay or area used for repair work. So it excludes.
But I think like Marty was saying, an automobile repair, someone, you know, would actually come in waiting for their vehicle. So you'd have more, you'd need more parking than I think, because someone just drops off his vehicle, they're gonna work on it for a week, I don't know.
Yeah, week, week.
They're not waiting around for it, you know what I mean?
I agree, this seems crazy.
I don't know, I don't know the issue of what you guys.
I mean, really, it really is. I mean, one car comes in, this car's getting done, leaving before the next car comes in, so it's.
It's a transition period because you don't know what you need.
Mechanics, like you guys got, you know, you know.
Yeah, in and out, Tara, because.
Currently, you have six bays, right? Is that in your district, really?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
How many parking spaces currently?
Um. So, uh, what, sorry.
Nineteen.
Is that what it's, it's six and?
Six, nine, three is eighteen, right?
So that's three, basically three per bay.
What is your utilization for the parking spaces that you currently have against your usage? So are you saying that there's always lots of empty parking spaces out there?
Yeah, we're, we're never full. And if, if it, we are full, it's because us personally left too much junk time. That our own personal vehicles, we should have gone home, you know?
But the other thing is too, you have some of these vehicles are bigger than a car sp- spot.
Yes.
Okay?
Yeah, definitely.
Because that's probably one of the reasons why the addition is coming on, because Tara, it's easy to turn around and put a Volkswagen in, okay? But when you turn around, you have a bigger vehicle with different heights, okay? It's hard to, to slide something in a twelve and a half foot door where you need a fourteen almost, I mean, uh.
Right.
How many, how many bays would the additional four thousand square feet accommodate?
Seven bays would, I was told.
Yeah.
Seven additional bays.
Depending on the vehicle size.
Yeah, depending on the vehicle, because if we put two, if we put two buses in or we do motor home and then whatever.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying is. Your base space, if you're measuring it for cars or if you're using it for other vehicles, which are larger. You aren't actually proportionate on base space.
No, because if we said we do, you know, pickup, you know, buses, we could say we're only gonna get.
One bay.
We have one bay in that shop, so.
That's.
You know, I guess we take a direct indication on what, what's going in there, changes on what the.
Demand.
Demand is.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. I just went by what we talked about. It said seven bays, but we're talking cars.
Right, yeah, I mean.
Right.
I guess technically, you, you look, if you look at it, cars are seven bays. If you look at it, trucks is, it's two.
Two, right.
So.
Yeah.
I have a question for the board and planner. How, how much flexibility do we have with this? Because to me, it seems like it's just a wasted.
I guess, I think it would. Three bays would be looking good.
I have, I, I understand that question. I have a different question, related to, to whether or not it needs to be paved.
Should I answer this question or wait for your question? Technically, gentlemen, the ordinance, that's the specification for that type of use. That's what your ordinance says. The number of parking spaces has to be provided for each one of these uses. If I could, if we could shove it into a different category.
And how do they define bay on there? I didn't look at the definition, but.
It's a work area. It's an area in which you're actually performing work, yeah.
Yeah, okay, gotcha. I think I did read that.
So, I mean, the flexibility.
The only other one that might seem close is service business.
Yeah.
But.
Note.
How is the ordinance specifying the pavement portion of the program?
That's, that's what I'm looking at.
The pavement portion?
Yeah, I mean, does, is, is, do we have flexibility in how much is paid?
In seven, six, B two.
More than fifteen vehicles there has got to be paid.
But that's the, that, see, that's where I'm having the question, because that section that's up in the back, the left hand, upper left-hand corner, doesn't have fifteen vehicles. Are we talking fifteen vehicles total or fifteen vehicles in a particular parking area?
It says all parking areas, driveways are the areas serving fifteen or more.
Well, that's why I was.
Parking area, yeah.
Because.
Yeah, but they're different parking areas.
Oh. And that's my point. It's a different parking area.
Fourteen in one, fourteen in the other?
Well, he's already got twenty-nine and it's paved. And then I'm looking at that section up in the corner. Does that need to be paved because it's less than fifteen vehicles? And that, that was my whole question. I don't know.
It's actually referring to the site.
It is, okay. That's, that's why I wanted to ask.
Do we have the language on that? I don't have it.
Seven, six, B two?
Yeah, I don't have it. Maybe you could read that.
But we don't have specific guidance for this year.
No, not for this year. This is for.
All parking areas, driveways and other areas serving fifteen or more vehicles shall be paved with two inches of batuminous concrete or equivalent surfacing over gravel based at least twelve inches in thickness. And shall have appropriate bumper or wheel guards where needed. However, the paving requirement does not apply to seasonal parking lots. For seasonal parking areas or lots, the two inches of batuminous concrete may be substituted for a minimum of two inches crushed gravel reclaimed to batuminous or similar stable surface material.
They are seasonal. But how many? They're not staying there permanently. Uh, how, how many bays do you have total now?
Six.
Six. No, I mean, that was just the addition total.
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Thirteen. It depends on which way you count it. You have six and two, six and two is eight.
Right.
Yeah, but still, when I, when I hear that standard for, for, um, pavement. It says areas, it doesn't say sites. And I can see this clearly as two separate parking areas. Now, can you, can you argue the converse of that, of that, Ted? Because I, I really, I can see this as two separate areas.
When, when was that written? That was written back in.
Two thousand ten.
Right, I mean, I can understand areas, because if you have a large parking lot.
We have a large, we have a large area and it's gonna be paved.
Right.
I think it's.
We have some smaller areas, if it gets exceeded, that's gonna, they have the crushed gravel.
Right.
I mean, it seems to me to meet the intent of what we wanted to make, make sure that there's not parking. I guess it's in that interpretation of.
Right.
Site versus parking area.
We have two different issues that are kind of intertwined here. It's the use is not quite a service station, an automobile ser- uh, repair station. And that interpretation of parking, so.
Well, it is an auto repair. This is no question, it's a repair.
It's auto repair. Well, I don't know, bodywork, well.
Bodywork is repair.
Okay, because it has a smile on it.
To, to me, it's different, but.
Yeah.
We almost, we need to address this going forward, but right now we're stuck with, with, with. I think it does, not so much stuck with, I think it's how you read the.
I think it's how you read the.
And I agree, I'm looking for that too. I think, I agree with you, John, that all parking areas.
Servicing fifteen or more could be the.
Does not really necessarily mean the entire lot. I don't, I'm look, I'm looking for everything about the, the whole entire site. I don't see it, but, I don't know, splitting hairs, but might be a way around this.
Yeah, because maybe you're only serving them when they're in the bays.
Something, it's, if you've got thirteen bays, you're right inside the law, but that's not the case. And those nineteen are already paved?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty, they will.
Twenty-nine will be paved.
They are now?
All parking are.
You already have those.
They're all paved. Fifteen pavement right here, you can see, these are all currently, all paved, this is half paved, and this is driveway, actual, that's gravel, but. So, you know, not quite all paved.
Okay. So, Ted, are there any other issues we need to look at on this?
There's, but. Yeah, there's buffering on the north, uh, the side of the, of the parking lot.
Buffering on the north?
Yeah, and then the question of, of stormwater drainage. You want to tell us the stormwater drainage, um, strategy you want?
Yeah, well, I mean, again, we're building it over in existing gravels and gravel and building in the same runoff as far as.
Okay, well, what is, what is the runoff treatment right now? I don't see it.
Right now, it's just the site just drains, you know, this wetland area right here. You can see the contours, everything's draining towards that land there. In the proposed building, we will add a D E P drip edge, you know, to catch the water off the main building so that it can go, they'll treat that building. Which will actually, uh, reduce the runoff on the site, at least for the two-year event. And, uh, I can do the calculations, but I'm pretty sure that once I put this as impervious, the pre-impulse, I don't believe we'll have any increased impervious area. We can look at it. But in a minimum, it's definitely, we're gonna put in a crushed on D E P drip edge, so the building's gonna shed in this direction. Like coming across on drip edge and we'll deal right back to the wetland edge. So I'll give some treatment. Right now, we have no treatment on that, it's just in gravel. So I'll give some treatment.
It's for the build, it's for the new building, right?
Correct.
Right.
Exactly.
Paul, um, you would have more impervious surface if that was paved, so.
No, it's gravel and pavement, it's the same thing.
It's the same.
This is, this is already.
The one in the back, is that already, you already have something there?
Oh, yeah, there's already parking here.
Oh, okay, I thought that would be new.
No, this is all, this is all, this is all gravel right here.
All right.
This is kind of all gravel through here.
It's gonna be, it'll be a dump, you know, shake it.
I didn't know it was already there, so.
D E P decided a long time ago, it has the same curve numbers.
Right, because what happens is the gravel.
Yeah, it doesn't sink.
No, it doesn't, it's supposed to come back. Ted, getting exposed to it first.
Getting back to paving.
Yeah.
Uh, parking spaces.
Uh, our parking spaces, if they had the previous pavers for parking area.
That's more expensive.
Very expensive.
That would be the same thing as gravel anyway, as far as.
Yeah, very expensive.
Actually, that will, that can actually reduce, it it does make the greatest of all curve numbers. But if you do, it depends which ones you use, if you use grasscrete. If you use the grass rings, you actually can get a decent, you can get a better curve number. In other words, you can get infillation like that, but.
But not when you're already on gravel, right?
No, there's, it's no, it's no net change, it's no net change.
Yeah, okay.
So, I don't think that the the runoff's gonna be a factor, I haven't looked into that at this stage in the game, but I don't think that's gonna be an issue as far as the uh, the requirements of stormwater. Um, in landscaping, we've been talking about that when you have a sidewalk to look at, I know there's, there are some pines that I am okay with on our property. Anybody located in the front of the, the front, you can kinda see there's a clump of trees in this area and a tree here and. It's got the old display vehicles for some sort of advertising, whatever you wanna call it, some landscape boulders.
Now, the two side lot lines have fifteen foot.
No.
This this one here has a pretty good resistance buffer, you know, there's a little enclosure in this area right here of gravel, but, you know. And then, so we certainly will repair that, we don't have a problem with that. Um, this is actually a thirty foot right away for Cynthia Hawkins' property, so she has access to use this as a right of way. This common driveway to access her also, and so obviously you can't do any landscaping on here. If you want, oh, cool, but the existing landscaping, she has rights to access her site, so I don't think landscaping this area is a problem.
She doesn't have access that way?
Huh?
She doesn't access any property that way?
Yeah.
The access is just she needs.
She has a huge piece of property too.
Okay.
Right, it is.
Fifty-three acres.
Yeah, here's the site, he has all this frontage.
I don't miss that.
Right?
Oh, alright, okay.
How about the, how about the other side? So, I think Ted's concerned more about this side. Cause you know, this is kinda all lawn right now, and you guys can take a look at that when you get out there, you know, certainly definitely might feel, fence might be better, I think that's appropriate.
What, what's next door?
I don't know, I don't even know a house, right, what is next door?
Little apartments.
Right. Houses, a couple cottages?
Yeah. Tons, little cottages.
What do you plan on doing with the the trailers that are currently there? It says that they're gonna be moved, but where do you plan on moving them to?
We haven't really decided that yet, but uh, I think the applicants might take a turn on the move back here, I'm not really sure.
Yeah, I mean, we we haven't really decided, I mean, they might stay exactly where they are.
Not these two.
Oh, those two?
Yeah, those two.
Can't where you put the building, unless you're gonna put them inside the building as a parking space.
So, I I believe we talked about relocating them back here.
Yeah, on the side.
We weren't really part of that, I guess, that's the thing, I mean, on back, obviously. Yeah, that's right. Um, as far as the um, fire protection, we're gonna let them achieve lighting, it's very good, it has very, very low voltage lights and all these lights, so we can talk about that. I can submit the uh.
Any of the catalog cut.
Yeah, I can submit the catalog cut for the new lights we're proposing. Um, Ted brought up something on the septic system, um, we're not having any additional bathrooms, any new new washrooms.
Are there more employees?
As it stands right now, no, we're we're just increasing the workspace, we're we're not planning to increase employees.
So. Um, and so, I I guess the the application is fairly straightforward, it serves very public water, serves a lot of septic, you got plenty of site distance. Um, I guess, you know, the best thing right now would be to uh, just figure out, look for a sidewalk. Figure, unless the board has any other concerns.
The only other, the only other question I'll see this, I won't see it when I get out there, but plans in the new bay. You're gonna be the same kind of disposal system, traps, putting them in barrels and having them shipped out.
Yeah, the same.
You're not changing any.
Nothing's changing on on trash or what hap- you know, waste or anything like that, it'll be the same as the other side.
Right, yeah, they have a man, they have a plan, the Westman and Combridge come on, come in and haul up all the waste.
Do you have a dump site dumpster?
Yeah, there are right here right now, ones uh, I did two different dumpsters.
Out of sight. It's out of sight.
Oh, there's a different dumpster.
One steel dumpster and one's a trash dumpster, but just stealing one, they can all.
So, you won't need any more, that's enough?
Nope, yeah, yeah.
And it's not visible from the road, yeah.
Yeah, pretty far back.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Okay, can we schedule a sidewalk? When, when tend the applicant be ready?
Not this weekend.
You gotta have.
Weather.
Yeah, advertising touch.
We schedule them every day.
And weather is not favorable.
No, it's not really, we're not keeping the sidewalk, and we pretty much can tell where the building's going, so I don't lay out work for you guys, so.
Well, the sun's still out till.
Can we get out?
It's thirty. It's nice.
We do it, we could do it sometime night before a meeting, maybe.
Well, that's that's what I was wondering, you know, I don't know, can we get out there?
Of course you can, you guys plow. Yeah, we pretty much got it all plowed, I think you could.
It's pretty much wide open, I mean.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
You'll be able to see pretty much everything you need to see, I mean.
If not, he'll take spray can and turn and paint it on the stuff.
Yeah, that's right.
I think probably the only thing we'd have to be able to see clearly is that northerly line.
Mm-hmm, yeah, that would be pretty.
It's obvious, it's very clear.
Yeah.
We need to post the sidewalk, how much notice the, three days?
Three business days.
What do you guys think of next Thursday?
Weather permitting.
Weather, yeah, weather permitting, obviously.
Sure.
We're gonna do a weekend. Applicant busy ready next Thursday?
Sure.
When?
Six o'clock.
When are you trying to do the?
A week from today, next Thursday?
Yes.
Start at six thirty.
It's beyond.
No, you better seven by then.
Two weeks?
Oh, that's next. No, I was thinking next week.
Next, oh, we meet every week, don't we?
Yeah, that's one who, one who come every week.
Thursday, then nineteen.
It's like we never leave.
Okay, we now.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, let's see.
Well, we need a six, we won't need more than half an hour.
Yeah.
Fifteen minutes, we'll see everything, I'm sure.
I think so.
Sunset on Wednesday is at six fifty-one.
Sure.
Yeah, so six thirty. Which is, what's the actual weather?
Sixteen seventeen quarter, no, sixteen thirty-two.
Four places down from the light.
Oh, I know where it is.
One with great sun.
Right.
This one, it just tell me when I'm going wrong.
Sixteen thirty-two?
Sixteen thirty-two quarter. And that time is what time?
Six o'clock.
Six P M? Twenty nineteen?
Coffee and donuts?
Can we get a motion?
I make a motion, we have a sidewalk uh, next Thursday, the nineteenth at six o'clock.
Okay.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yeah. Alright, we'll see you guys, see you guys.
Motion is unanimous.
Don't average it yet, there's one that, the long information GPS system. Guys on a ski trip in Europe, you're supposed to go to a ski resort, and they're about eight hundred miles away, and you were supposed to.
Yeah, Roger, motion's there. I think Tom seconded it.
Did we vote on it?
Yeah, we did, and it was unanimous.
Not good. Okay. This was a case of GPS in the same city, in the rural country. And the father died. We have to have a little bit of wind, you know, we had eighty miles. Well, the the city was in the canyon, that they were supposed to go to, the city had a bad weather, so it was not the other side. I guess I'd ask them a little bit of. Yes. Yeah, well, I don't know, when these ski clubs on trips, everybody put the bus drive in. It's not really skiing, but it's better than here. Probably, no.
Unless you guys wanna stay.
Sounds fun.
Sounds too fun for me.
You like the company. Get you more fun. By the way, we've been talking about signs and admiring your sign many times over.
Thank you, we never mentioned it.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
So, you guys.
Thank you.
Okay.
We'll see, we'll discuss that.
I'd say on to bigger and better things, but I'm not sure if that's a reality.
Okay, at least bigger things, right?
At least bigger things.
Right.
We're into, back into the A R D.
Right, we had just.
But we have to figure out, have to figure out where we are.
Little thing that we have to finish up on that, right?
We did, and it was on.
Well, maybe that's what the other.
We're gonna start with five point one, six point six off premises signs. We were in, we were in the sign, the sign ordinance itself. What are we, this is not the one that I wanted.
Um, why, boy, I wanted to ask Ted, because we were talking about light and light intensity and all of that. I did a little bit of research, and I'm wondering, did the sign people tell you they make their foot candles?
They do, uh, lumens.
Lumens, okay, because that's what I found, lumens and lux are pretty much related, I mean, they're just different forms.
And a foot candle, it's one point three two or something to per one foot candle is one point three three, they're all.
Right, but.
They're all related.
Lux, lumens and lux is apparently the standard, that's what we're, okay, good. Mr. Plant, uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Before we get started, there's one person in the audience, I wonder if, if um, we know, if you have anything in particular you're for?
I think it'll be brief, I think it'll be brief, it's actually item three on the proposed ordinance changes. The review to request the self-storage units we proposed in D B two district.
Motion to take it out of order.
Yeah, well.
Yeah.
Tom?
I, I'll make a motion, I hate to have someone sit, suck it through two hours.
I was gonna go to the comfy chair.
It's painful. Uh, so I'll make a motion that we change, uh, we change, put that, uh, maybe we can give it a time limit so the signs are are important and.
How much of the time do you wanna put on it?
Twenty minutes?
Twenty minutes, okay.
I'll take three.
Well, three minutes, even better. So, they're wearing, well, it's.
The motion has been made and seconded to take the the item out of order, uh, review of request to incorporate self-storage units. Uh, is there any discussion, okay, motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor? All those opposed, motion's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Great.
Um, you guys got a letter from Ken Wood from Matter Engineering on the fourteenth, I believe? Did you all see that letter? Um, and basically, I just wanted to come up as a representative of the of J T F Corp. Um, that they're pretty sincere about an expansion, they're, they they're doing a great job over there, the the business is full, they have a waiting list. And the Stricklands, Paul Strickland and his sister, I think it's Carolyn out in the back, that these two properties actually but the storage unit, so we wouldn't need a curb cut. But they're just not zoned for it, it just seems natural to have that sort of an expansion. And according to Ken, you guys already are considering or it is allowed to have warehouse storage and automobile storage and job site storage, all kinds of different things that probably don't look as good as the outside storage. There'd be no additional curb cut, you probably wouldn't see them from Route one, just seems like a natural fit to that discussion that you guys were planning to have anyway, if that makes sense. And where Ted was nice enough to slip it on the agenda, I felt I should just come up to, I guess, show some sincerity that we're very interested in having this thing put on the agenda.
It's right at the end of the zone, right? Up next to the.
It is our property line, yes.
Yeah, it, this is a Linux word.
Yeah.
It goes back to, if you recall, the D B two district that we are spanning, goes back to the edge of the Strickland land, or maybe you'll have to give me, I keep forgetting the name of the farm. Um, the big farm on on uh, um.
On Limerick Road.
Yeah, uh, what's the name of it? You know, it's it's owned by the folks from Massachusetts, but it's on the right hand side as you're going up Limerick Road. And uh, big white farm, farmhouse, uh.
Yeah, yeah.
That old period. Um, big open field, their property butts up against against that property. So, the the termination of the D B two district along uh, Limerick Road is at the Strickland property, at Strickland name. And then it goes, that basically follows, follows.
Say this is right at the whole end of the whole zone.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I pictured it right.
But that will become the D B two.
Right. And what you had done, just just so you know, um, you had gone through uh, the list of uses and you had originally decided that since the uses of a um, self-storage units were going to continue to be allowed in the B one I district. I can't see it was necessary in D B two district, but that was your logic at that time. I don't know what you, if you wanna continue with that, but um, you have a proposal here that that facility would want to expand.
Do you all have, have you all approached the Stricklands at all?
They approached us.
They approached you?
Yep, to buy it, and then the J T F was gonna buy it right out until we started doing a little research that that property line actually is the deciding factor right now for self-storage.
Right, right now, is it, could you build it right now?
Yeah, well, I'd have to.
No, I I mean, the, before it's changed to D B two, there.
No.
No, the boundary ends, they're at the maximum boundary, when we did, when we did your expansion, we went right up to the edge of where they could go.
That was basically one thousand feet, or twelve hundred feet, you guys, when it first started.
Okay. Paul's got, Paul's got probably ten or twelve acres there, and he wants to cut off four and keep, I guess he's got a red trailer or something up there in his house. And he's gonna keep that, and then his sister owns a piece that's out behind him, that they'd actually have to demo some stuff to be able to get the right of way to get back there. Um, so she's willing to sell the back part.
I believe that's the trailer of the front, isn't it?
It is.
That's Mon's trailer.
Yeah.
I guess the. So, with that vision, I guess the board issue, if you, if this gets approved, I mean, if we say, yeah, let's add it to the D B two because there is the low impact manufacturing and as was mentioned, a lot of the other sorts, it seems to be consistent. Also, we got a business that wants to expand now. Um, but if if it does, if the board does decide to do this, then it could go anywhere.
That's right, it'll pick the whole.
I mean, that's the, that's the, that's the only negative that I see about the proposal.
Is it, is it a negative?
Well, I don't know, I.
Because as as D B two was envisioned, it's for larger businesses that make up more space and are more industrial and all that, and I don't see.
We want it more out of sight.
Right.
So, it meets a lot of the criteria of D B two, we just eliminated, that's all, yeah. I wasn't saying, bro, work on, I'll just.
No, and that's how, that's where my thought process was too. How does this conflict or conform with what we want in D B two? I don't see a real conflict.
Oh, and especially with it being right up against the residential area, this is probably the lowest in that we could possibly have over there. But again, thinking, what if it's right in the middle, I I guess that's not a problem either, cause it's in the back. So, I don't, I don't see getting a million at least. From your, the present property line, depth wise, how much would you be rejecting towards the old Limerick Road?
Four hundred feet.
And then you turn out from that way, you would be following, would you be coming down behind the two butter properties that are.
And then you turn around from that way, you would be following, would you be coming down behind the two, uh, butter properties that are going to the south of you?
The only way I think I can tell you, and you're familiar with it more probably than I am, is if you're standing on Route one.
Yeah.
And you see where we put the new storage building, the small one.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
You gotta go behind that, because their property line doesn't go to Route one. So, right at the corner of our property, you're gonna go to the left as you're looking south on Route one, you're gonna go about four hundred feet, and then you're gonna go up four hundred, and then he wants to cut it over to keep away from his own house a little bit. You'll take a two-hundred-foot line that'll go back to connect to Carolyn's property, and then, and I, I don't know how far it goes back, there's a swamp back there that we couldn't go to.
Right.
But off of the end of our property, there's a bunch of upland buildable area, inside of a six-acre swath, there might be two and a half acres of buildable area. So the whole thing might be six to seven acres.
Cause I know it's twice that, that's why I'm asking.
It is.
But, you know, aside from that, this particular specific view, I think the big question for the board is, does the storage units, does that conflict with the uses we foresee in DB two? You know, personally, I don't see a conflict, and, and I, I'm wondering if any of the other board members do.
At, at the risk of offending the applicant, and if I do, I'm sorry, but we've already been through DB two for a year and a half. I really don't see the need to add anything else in, because if we start adding stuff in now, next week, when somebody comes and says, I wanna do something different in DB two, what do we say to them? We gotta stop and review the whole thing all over again? Or do we say yes? And that's, that's my concern about the whole issue.
Well, that's something, you're right, we have to watch out, but we will be having public hearings that will, will result in some changes. And I, I wouldn't be surprised if this is one of the things that comes up, because some property owners are interested in it.
And the other thing is too, we have the policy, if it isn't written, it's not allowed. And this is what the question is, it's being asked now, so it, it will be allowed. And then you won't have to review everything along the way. It would be, uh, it's like turning on definitions, like I've said.
One other aspect, uh, if we have storage units in DB two, is that the best use of land in DB two? From the tax standpoint.
Tax-wise, it probably is.
Let me ask you this, uh, knowing the property, okay?
Fine, well, I'm not talking about this specific, I'm talking about the whole district. Cause once we say yes, it's gonna be, the entire district is gonna be.
Probably not a, a big, uh, job creator, but it's the buildings that have property taxes on, or is tax?
I don't know, where it falls, I don't know where it falls on taxes.
Are these, are these gonna be climate controlled, or are these just regular buildings?
Whatever she says to build, whatever the need is, is there really, what, fifty bucks difference in each unit? Is that the question, like?
No.
How much are they gonna generate for money?
No, well, no, not money, um, you know, I was just thinking about infrastructure, that's all. Cause obviously, climate control, you're talking about heating, cooling, and all this, that, which is totally, totally different than just standing up a, a shelf, which is what they are.
Well, the heating and cooling on, on all of them are inside the building.
Right.
Just got a PVC chimney coming out of them. So they just take up a, a half a unit, we put them inside.
But what I'm saying is, I'm asking, are the storage units climate-controlled?
Majority of them are.
The majority of them there are not, yes.
So they're, they're shelves, basically, there's, there's, uh, there's, there's still shelves. So if you're looking at tax revenue, if that's your only criteria, um, yeah, then there are other uses that would probably generate more tax revenue, if that's the question, and personal property, but, um. Just, just so you know.
But I don't know that that's for us to decide, you know, which uses are winners and which uses are losers, losers.
Is there any way just to change a boundary line? Not change a whole district, just drag where we currently are?
It's harder to change the boundary line than it is to change the permitted uses.
Okay.
Oh, you're in the right district.
Yeah.
It's not in the joint, see, because in the, in, in the new district, you won't be a non, what's gonna happen is you're gonna be a conforming use, no matter what. Okay, your facility will be a conforming use, because it's an existing use, you're not gonna be called non-conforming. I'm just, I'm just thinking about something else right now, which.
As far as expanding though, then.
You can expand a non-conforming use.
How much?
Well, fifty percent.
You know what, his, my, my input is, it's, to me, it seems like if we had thought of storage units while we were going through the discussion, I, I don't know why it didn't come up, I think.
It did, it did come up.
Oh, I remember that.
I watched it when you weren't here.
That's why I brought it back here, it wasn't, no, we, I was saying, oh yeah, we just overlooked that, we'll bring that in, we'll, we'll add that in, that was an issue you actually discussed, and that's why I said, you've got, you've got to discuss it right here.
Okay.
Cause that was something that you missed that much. I, I should have brought the notes, we have some notes.
I don't, I don't know what the difference between, well, it, it, we're still discussing, I don't know what the difference between this type of use in, uh, construction storage area would be.
Contractor storage.
Contractor storage.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Well, got personal property tax and also your asphalt. Yeah, because they.
But you have asphalt in this too.
Yeah, because you get a dollar per square foot every year.
So I think at, at this point, it's a question, what's the pleasure of the board's.
Do you have to decide right now? I think the board is kinda hesitant right now, so perhaps we can make a, a, a future agenda item, near future.
Yep.
What is there, also, is there a timeframe that you're playing with the Stricklands?
For the Stricklands, it's the sooner the better. It's, he's, he's really the one driving it, um, and it's just a great opportunity for us.
But even given that, nothing we've done until town meeting?
No, no, I just didn't know if there was already possibly a purchase sale agreement already in place to, pending upon this, that's why I asked that question.
Over-the-hood handshake, yes. There is, he's not talking to anybody else, he doesn't, can't build another house there because he'd have to knock the mother's trailer down.
His problem is, he, he, he needs, he has a problem with way in which trailers may encroach them, and so he can't make improvements without change, moving the trailer or destroying it.
And we feel, it's a wonderful fit, where we're not gonna have another curb cut, like I said, we'll see it, all that good stuff.
Okay, so we'll just, we'll have this put on the agenda for future discussion at some point. Why would you wanna do that?
Let's make sure we do it before, you know, our, our public hearing.
I don't wanna get lost in that. Do, what do we have going on next week, do you know?
It's up to you.
Well, I didn't know if we had any applications.
Well, let me ask.
Well, next week, technically, all right, here's the issue, if, um, technically, you have a special meeting next week, which is in which you, you don't dedicate time to your zoning laws. Then let's put it on for next week.
Okay, why, why was item three on this agenda?
Item three, I'm sorry.
Why, why, why was it listed?
There was a request.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there, there was a, the, the.
Okay. Don't go to.
It has been delayed three times.
In, uh, priority, cause this came the last thing.
I feel we, we should make sure we, we finish the signs in the, uh, the, the new zone, I think we've been, we, we need, we can't get off track, we'll never get back to it.
But there's no more information on this that we're going to get.
Unless you want more information.
Huh?
Unless you want to.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I haven't heard that anybody on the board say they've wanted more information, I mean, really.
I, I tell you, I would like to see, turn around for size-wise.
I'm just saying, we're spending five minutes to put it off.
Yeah, but size-wise, to see what actually your.
But this is not an application.
I realize that, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, you know, you can say somebody feet this way, somebody feet that way, but just turn around.
But, but Marty, that, that whole question is irrelevant, because it's a question, do we allow this in that?
DB two.
Not whether or not we allow this applicant to proceed forward. So I guess, I, it's a, it's a question of whether or not somebody wants to make a motion, or do we put it on for next week's agenda? I'm kinda with Tom on it, I'd just assume.
Move.
Do, either do something, or, or put it away for, till, till it's on meeting.
I think, I, I would. Make a motion to put it on next week's agenda, because at that point, I think board members will have a chance to think about it, and we should be ready to make the decision. It's not terribly complex decision, so.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Well, I, I don't think that requires a motion to put it on, I think.
That's your, that's at your discretion.
We'll just, we'll just have it put on, put on the agenda for next week, so that we can discuss it, and in the meantime, spend the next week thinking about how you wanna vote on it, and we'll make that decision next week.
Yeah, cause truthfully, it's not the down vote, you either.
It, it either is or it isn't.
That's right.
Okay.
Is that a public meeting next week? Or is it just a workshop?
Always a, always a, always a.
You're welcome to come.
And we'll be here.
All right, I appreciate you bumping me up, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. So. Five point one six six, off-premises signs.
Okay, we're back on. Oh, are we, are we in ARD, or are we, where are we?
No.
On the alternative sign performance standard.
Wait, are we all done with ARD?
No.
Except for the signs, we had to get through the signs before we could finish ARD.
Is that what it was?
That was the issue.
Are we in the signs?
Yeah, we're, we're actually looking at off-premises signs. And we said that with the, we said that with the exception of main DOT directional signs, or temporary off-premises farm signs. Or sign, temporary off-premises signage permitted by the codes enforcement officer.
Yeah, that's.
That has me confused, I said.
We, 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 we can't direct any signs, we put on somebody else's property.
No, that's, um.
And, and the applicant can't be forced to put signs on other property?
Well, remember, off-premises signage is usually within the right-of-way.
I think, let's see. But that's, that's listed in step four, which is signs in the right-of-way.
Yeah.
Which is why three had me confused.
I think that may refer to, as I'm thinking about it, you know, the signs that are up now, frost heaved.
Well, those are exempt anyways, those are town signs.
Yeah, where are they exempt in the list?
Everywhere, municipal.
Temporary signs.
Municipal signs are exempt.
Yeah.
They would be a temporary sign anyway.
It is, but is it on our list?
Is it temporary sign right there on the real estate?
It's a municipal and state sign. Put up by the public works department.
Right, but do we have that listed as an exempt?
Yes.
Where?
The first one, five sixteen fourteen one.
Five sixteen fourteen one. Yep, the following signs are exempt, municipal and state sign. Yeah, I know I lost that fight, I remember not liking the idea that the governor could do what it wanted.
Even under, even under. Even under item three, temporary off-premises signage may be permitted by the code enforcement officer as prescribed in five sixteen six. This is five sixteen six.
So, what do you mean? Sort of a self-redundant.
No, we don't.
Self-refered, what does it mean?
All signs, all, don't all signs have to be on your premises?
No, I mean, huh?
No, no. No. The other two up above.
Right, agricultural.
I think what we're gonna do in that, I don't think we're.
Well, that's controlled by the state.
Right, but farm signs are controlled by us, and we said that you can have them off-premises.
We're doing for directional purposes.
Yeah, like the.
Or so, so, so you could turn around and have your little, uh, reader board along the road there, say where the farm, farm stand is two miles down the road.
Isn't that regulated by the state though?
No, this is one of the new signs that you wanna have, so you can put up along the side of the road, fold up.
We already have it.
Yeah, but that's, that one's gotta be on your, um.
That needs to be in your.
Your own property.
Or in your regulation. On your own.
No, if, if another, somebody wants to turn around and tell you where to go pick blueberries.
You can do the DOT directional signs, but.
No, that's the blue signs, DOT directional signs are the blue signs, they all get two.
There's the one that took the flowers, they're all down, they got wings.
So we have, we have the farm stand ones, those are the ones that Marty's talking about, that's the temporary off-premises farm stand signs. Remember those, we put that in?
Like corn, farm stand ahead of the.
Right.
Blueberries.
Okay, so they have to get permission from the people on the property, they're putting their, their boards, okay, that I can understand. For farm stands.
There was a reason why that was in there, but I can't find it anymore. So, you know, we have banners, political signs, um. Well, I think the, the, you know, the, the problem with sandwich board signs. Sandwich board signs are gonna be in the right-of-way, that's basic, that's the way it's gonna be. But we can't help, we can't help for that, because it's not our property. This is the problem we ran away with VIP, correct? Yeah, if you wanna put the sign in the state right-of-way, remember?
Yeah.
But they had to get permission, because turn around their property line, their property line for VIP was, uh, forty feet in, forty feet in.
Right away.
And then they had to move it out.
Because we couldn't approve it in it right of way, that was my.
Cause they have their property.
We don't have no right to do that.
We don't, so we'll take that out, so can that right now?
Which one?
Number three, temporary off-premises signage.
Other than that?
You know, number two, that temporary off-premise for farm stands, selling thing, you know, if it's similar, fine, but.
Cause that's what we have right now, right?
That's what he says right now, in five fourteen.
Yeah, well, and what we have right now is, is, and the problem is, you know, other, in our current ordinance, it's kind of all over the place, so you, you have to hunt through it. This is a reorganization of our current ordinance. We have seven twelve C, that's our off-premises signs, and then we have existing signs, and then somewhere else in there we've got, then we go over to the farm stand signs. And we have temporary signs, new established businessman had one temporary sign up for sixty days.
It's like a project development.
No, it's like open business, you know, new, new business, opening for business, grand, those are the grand opening signs.
We did have something on project signs.
We do have something on project signs.
But they represent, you have.
Yeah, cause I remember we had the discussion about, you know, some guy paving the driveway, and can you put up a project sign, say, who wants?
Yeah.
Okay, so in five sixteen six on off-premises signs, up, taking number three out, is there anything else in there?
What about, under your signage, your, which agricultural, not meaning temporary?
Let's work on this, on the off-premises signs.
Marty, if you're talking about, you know, the blueberry signs, that's in temporary off-premise farm stand signs.
No, I'm not talking about that.
Really?
That's what I turned around and mentioned two weeks ago about an act, as agriculture.
Yeah, but that's not a temporary sign, that's a.
I know, it wasn't temporary.
So it's, we're, we're in, we're dealing with temporary signs right now, right?
We're dealing with off-premises.
Off-premises, right.
So, yeah, I think there'd just be two categories, and what, um, farm stands are allowed in the DOT, that's it.
And then there's a section four, which has signs in the right-of-way, private rights of way, public rights of way, with, which have project identification and directory signs, permanently located within the right-of-way. permanently located within the right of way, provided that the signs are associated with a development.
So the.
An MDOT right of way, which we can't argue with anyway.
Okay, but I guess, I think Marty was getting at a, not a temporary off premises sign, farm sign, but a permanent one, right?
Yeah, that's another category.
So we don't have it in there?
Yeah, we do.
Where?
It's in, right here, five sixteen eleven.
Sixteen eleven, performance sense for signs of residential and rural conservation districts. Now, I have to change that back, so that's gonna be to the moment R four does, residential and the R four. Oh, that is rural conservation, we'll keep calling it rural conservation district. But I gotta change it to R four.
Okay, so I'm confused. So barely we could justify that.
It's not a temporary sign, it's not a sign in the right of way.
It's not an off premises sign, I believe.
No, it's off premises sign.
Right, and that, and that's my point, we were talking about off premises signs, so this is a different.
An off premises permanent sign. We allow only up to something like a hundred and fifty days.
Hundred and fifty days.
So if a farm wants to advertise manure, it can turn around and put a temporary off premise sign somewhere.
If, yeah, for a hundred and fifty days, if he can find some.
Up to a hundred and fifty days, so he can. I'm just asking, I've done.
Yeah.
If he, yeah, I think. I mean.
That exists right now, Marty.
I'm only asking a question.
An answer.
And after a hundred and forty days, he can stop for days and then do it in our hundred.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's hard to spread it, we're.
So signs located in the right of way, we'll retain, we'll retain that a little bit, yeah? Any issues in there that you want to talk about? You remember that, that some of this came about, first of all, we have the private rights of way and the public rights of way. Private rights of way are, are, are basically, this is what happens when you have a project and directory sign that you put up.
Yeah.
A perfect example is, uh, technology park, the Rundle machine. That sign was in the right of way, but it became public right of way, it's a private right of way that became a public right of way.
But at first, it was private.
It wasn't allowed to be put up.
It wasn't allowed to go in there.
That's why we had to make a special town meeting.
I thought, so I'm gonna have to see that it's in there.
Yep, well, we passed that a while ago, but, but it's back in there to make sure that we have that consistency.
But I, I would change the wording just a little bit, we, we have that A easement is granted by the main department of transportation in there, right of way, within that verbiage?
No, not in that one, that's.
No, one down the line.
MDOT rights.
For the MDOT rights, I'm sorry, but I thought you were talking the other example that we used to overrun the other one.
With the private way, the one question I have is, is, we think for commercial uses, it seems to make sense, that it, this would also apply to residential developments, is that all right?
Right.
Darrell's Bridge, Darrell's Woods, they might want to have a, they'd be allowed to have a sign.
Yeah, it does not, it does not make a distinction between commercial and non-commercial, the only thing that does make is that when you get in the MDOT right of way, in route one, you're dealing primarily with commercial, in route one eleven, you're dealing with primarily with well.
Commercial?
No, commercial for the first half and the second half.
This is all across town though.
Yeah, well, no, the MDOT ones are only where we have.
DOT, but the.
We don't include, but notice this, it's only, it's only route one and route one eleven, it does not include Long Cabin Road, which is actually a state road.
Let's take those MDOT on Long Cabin Road.
And what I'm saying, that's a state road, that's a road that's maintained by the state.
Now, that sign's gonna be more than eight feet tall? From where, where are you getting this stuff from, when you say that?
So can I go back to private?
MDOT side.
The private rights of way, that's, is, is that all right, that it would be applied to residential as well as commercial? And that could be all over town, no distinction, is everybody's all right with that?
I, I don't have a problem with the private, private rights of way, I have a problem with the public rights, rights of way. It's a private right of way, if you want to put a sign on it, go ahead.
It would pretty much be. Okay, so the public rights of way with the town road would be a private.
A private sign in, in the public right of way.
Okay. Yeah, I don't see where we have the authority to allow a sign in the public right of way.
Well, look what it says, guys, read it, because you've already, you've already passed this, it exists.
It's already there.
It's already there.
It's a directory sign, project identification, if public money has been used.
Right. That's specifically for technology drive, very simply put, that was a, that was a CDG project, it was paid for.
We apply a rental, seasonal as well.
Now, seasonal would, because we're not spending money.
Public money's involved in that? Even, no public money?
No, how about this TIF stuff?
That's return, it's not using public money.
It's still public money.
It's return.
It's diff, yeah, it's different.
Deferred.
Well, if you change that, that's fine with me. And if you change the chain, the size of it, that's fine with me too. Because if it applies to all districts, you know, it's not a small sign, fifty square feet.
Are we done with the private and public bird?
What's the, what's the biggest sign that we allow, forty?
Fifty. Future?
No, right now.
Hundred and fifty throughout town?
No. What is it, Ted, maximum signage now, before the dwindling?
I thought it was fifty.
Maximum directory sign. I want to be safe.
Hold on, Marty. Oh, let's see, posted a fifty, sixty, eighty square feet, total project, total, here you go, total of all post signs per lot shall not exceed a hundred square feet. But that's for all post signs, so that's a situation where you have two post signs, no post project identification sign that's located more than twenty-five feet from the right of way shall exceed eighty square feet in area. But that is actually in the, in the CCS district, CCS, CN, and HC districts. So those are in the.
That's really the largest technically now.
Yeah, and those are, those are in the, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't make a distinction there, I'm just looking at this, I don't think it. It's, it's confusing, because, um, post signs are.
Said that for years, it's confusing.
No, post signs are allowed in those districts, so you know, technically, there's a conflict in the ordinance, where you could, it doesn't make a distinction between a post sign in a residential district, but it does say in the residential district, you can't have signage that exceeds.
Three square feet?
Four square feet. So, there's a conflict there.
That's in the current one.
Yeah, so, so we'll, we'll be changing that anyways.
So that brings them, so that brings them up from that four square feet or whatever, to thirty-two square feet? Anywhere, right?
Well, you know, the interesting thing about this is, when you do a project, right now, right now, we have four square feet, which is pretty interesting, so you want to put up a permanent project sign, like a good example, it's down now, would be in Clarview Estates.
Talbot Woods, they use the sign there.
Yeah, Talbot Woods, there's one there, what if they put us, if they wanted to have a project, gated community, they want a project sign, in a residential area? Right now, they're limited to, right now, they're limited to four square feet, which is why it's down here. Clarview Estates fell down, that's why.
Yeah.
That's why that's not there, but, but Alpine Lane is still standing.
Oh, and the woods, the sign is still there.
How big was the Clarview Estates, that was, that was pretty big.
Very big.
How big was the Clarview?
Pretty big.
Sixty or something, it was pretty big.
No, I don't think it was sixty, but it was pretty big, it was a long sign.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a big sign, it was high, it's a tall sign, so the issue is, you know, that's, that's a, we have a little gap in the, in the wall there, and a hole in the dyke there, because unless we say this is limited to the mixed use districts, you know, the commercial and mixed use districts, I mean, we're, this is a big hole. And the question is, is that something you want in residential districts, do you want project signs in residential districts?
How big is the golf course sign?
That.
That's residential.
No, that's, that's, that's the rural conservation district.
Rural conservation.
That's where, that's where it's.
And the borders, because of borders, Clarview Estates and Juniors on Thompson, when you have houses across the street.
Yeah, but they're technically, they're technically in the, in the R four district.
So what size is that, Joe?
No, that's rural conservation.
If it's just a housing development, how much do they need? Twenty, twenty square feet is.
Four by five, that's pretty big.
Pretty big.
Well, it's like, it would be like having in Talbot Woods, or, or this is, this is, well, Rundle, Marty, you mentioned Rundle, Rundle Estates has a sign. You know, it's pretty standard in gated, especially in, in upscale residential communities, more than, kind of something than actually start seeing, I think. You're gonna start seeing, they want to put up a project sign, Rundle will keep one up for the project sign. You know, and the project sign right now, what we've got is, is four square feet.
Four is pretty small.
Well, we got four square feet on one side, and then here we've got a project sign, we can have up to fifty square feet, we have a conflict, Joe.
That's a big square.
That's a big.
One of these tables probably like twenty-five square feet probably, that's pretty big.
Well, think of a sheet of plywood, it's four by eight, it's thirty-two square.
Yeah.
And we all know the sheet of plywood, that's, that's a, you know, that's smaller than the sheet, the whiteboard is sheeted, it's smaller than the sheet of plywood right there, I mean, that's bigger than sheet.
So.
Thirty-two square feet is not a small sign.
Yeah, that's a giant sign.
I agree, it is, it is not a small sign, but for the sake of my own sanity, I don't want to create different ones in different zones.
No, I agree, across town.
If, if we're gonna say, you, you can have a post sign in the right of way that is fifty square feet in size, I don't care if you're in a business or a residence, the residences are gonna get upset if they don't like the sign. If you put a development in and they don't like the sign, that sign won't stay.
Well, which residents aren't gonna like it, the ones that, that want the sign, or the ones that live around it?
Well, the ones with the chainsaw. I, I just, I don't want to, because we end up nickel and, nickel and diving, and pretty soon, we're gonna say, in the R three, it can look like this, in the R one, it can look like this, in the ARD, it can look like this.
So then, unfortunately, we've got the industrial way of Technology Lane in, in versus Talbot Woods, I would say, which size sign do they each need?
Don't know.
Well, fair enough, we keep it simple, but on the lower side.
Then reduce the size of the sign.
Okay, what size are you referring to, how many square feet?
For two functionally different types of uses, two functionally different kinds of signs, guys, you have a post sign in industrial districts, so you can, with, you know, your directory signs got the businesses on it. You're not gonna list all the residences on a project sign in a residential district. That's just a standard thing to do.
I don't think a one size fits all.
No, one size doesn't fit in this situation.
For example, if you have a fifty-five age community, okay, you may turn around and have a very elegant, stone wall, lit it up side to, for projection, it's like how they have up on Cape Elizabeth.
They all have bad eyesight, so they need bigger signs.
That's why you need bigger letters. Now, we said lit it, let me know.
Usually, you know, usually, usually, they're not usually much, much bigger than, I would say they're not much bigger than twenty-five or thirty square feet for, for a, for residential project sign.
Yeah, well, why would you need it bigger?
Well, they, there's an expense issue, in fact. But usually, it's incorporating the landscape, I mean, I've done this myself, you know, you put in a stone wall and you incorporate a sign into it, it's actually in the stone wall.
But they're not all, they don't always have to be like that.
They just want to put a post sign, you know, with a, with a background of vegetation, with a stone wall, or with something in front, because that's expected, that's part of, that's.
Yeah.
That's part of, when you do a project like that, people expect that they, they want.
Obfuscation, yes.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're paying extra money, and let me tell you, real estate in Rundle, it's not cheap, it's getting more expensive all the time.
Welch's Construction is a giant rock.
Right.
Yes.
Piece of granite.
Piece of granite. Carb. The sign in it, and our current ordinance doesn't allow that, it's gotta be a post. Right, it doesn't allow it at all.
It's one of, it's a beautiful sign.
It is, it's great.
But it's not allowed. You know?
What's that? I think it would be, sure, I don't see why it's not. Where in the ordinance would it not be allowed?
Is it a post sign?
By definition, it's not a post sign, well. Because there's no post.
And, and in your ordinance, it doesn't say it could be made out of stone, you're all talking. It's like we never turned around and had before digital, so I mean.
We had all of this, there is a million of the forms.
Thank you.
No, you know, we don't have any good definite, we don't have, it must be under sign, hold on, let me just check this. Post, a sign from support by one or more upright poles.
Yep.
Project identification signs, a sign named, naming a resident, ah, oh no.
Well, no.
I thought it was, I had a revelation, but I don't. A sign naming a residential subdivision, commercial, or industrial development site where there are multiple lots or businesses more than three. That's a project identification, a marquee sign, you know, we don't have any of those. That's really a movie or a theater, I mean, that's one of the, that canopy sign, sign area sign, no, we don't make a distinction on that, the post sign is upright, is, is like posts.
They're all, they're all posted, or, and things, all of our signs.
Well, no, there isn't, there's one, if you look at five sixteen A six, this, this does not apply to Mark Welch, but five sixteen A six says that signs located within thirty feet of street corners and set upon the ground shall be no more than three feet in height, or you can put them on posts and have them higher.
And that's dealing with, that's dealing, dealing with visibility.
Oh, yeah, no, I understand that, I'm just saying that, that, that that would be an argument for Mark Welch's sign.
No.
Except that he's not on a corner.
Yes, he is, because it's on private way, right?
Okay, then he's on a, he's, his sign's, is probably higher than three feet though.
Yes.
So he would hire.
Well, look, you know, what, what.
But it's not also written that you can turn around and do it out of stone, and in a way, you, everybody has the ideas, is if it ain't written, it's not allowed.
Well, back, back to this, so on four A, the private rights of way, it doesn't say anything about the size.
A private rights of way, no, it doesn't.
No, it doesn't.
But B does.
But B addresses a public right of way.
But it also, it's only if it's in part or all of the public money, so that, that's pretty rare, how many of those are we gonna get? One every fifteen years, ten years, no, so it's very unusual, I think the big one is A, the private rights of way, whether it's a commercial or residential subdevelopment, I think will be, and we've already been asked for those already, but there's no size, there's no size listed there, maybe we could just leave no size and just let it go for now.
Well, because you know what that means, in a residential subdivision, it would be four square feet.
Four square.
That's a reasonable sign for project identification, so it's certainly not for a residential subdivision sign, that's four square feet, it's two by two at the most.
Yeah.
You know, that's really small.
Pretty small.
Think of a Rundle transmission.
Yeah, it's probably about that size.
Yeah.
Well, we need to get references out of.
Yeah, we need to get this out, because we're running out of time. All right, you want me to come up with some sign, sign sizes for that? First of all, you want to prescribe private rights of way signs, or?
Private right of way.
Shall we leave it as the signs that are allowed in the res, in the districts? The sign sizes that are allowed in the district, and we prescribe what a maximum size. The sign sizes that are allowed in the district, and we prescribe what a maximum size project sign is in the residential district.
So that would be in addition.
Yeah, that would work. That might be the way to do it, and say, you know, you know, maximum size based on their district is located. Because remember, we're referring back to that, that section, you know, the, the ARD section, which is gonna allow, have all the sign sizes.
Like, do we have that to refer to, do we have something there, uh, in the residential districts?
We will. We will, we'll have to put, we will.
All right, so we'll come back, have to come back to that, you'll come up with language on that?
I will come up with language for next.
I think, or so what's reasonable, twelve square feet or?
Well, we'll have to look at that when we get to the, to that zone.
Sounds good.
But right now, I will tell you this right, right now, that you've got, um, it do address some signs in some of these districts, specifically on the issue of farm signage and home occupations. You notice it says performance sign stands for all, for signs in residential rural conservation districts. We do have sign sizes in there for specific uses, so, but I will come up with basically project signs in residential districts and project signs in a commercial district. I'll just say, I'll come up with the language for project signs.
Okay.
Okay, let's, let's go on to temporary signs.
Now, can we do the main DOT rights of way?
Yeah.
Um, I just have a recommendation, third sentence down. Starts with the buts, the principal ingress egress to the property.
Yeah.
I would then add, and, a sign easement is granted by the main department of transportation and the planning board determines that the proposed sign location. So, it's only authorized.
Let me put this, and a sign easement.
If they get the easement from them.
Yeah.
Well, we turn it, we turn it, yeah. These signs here, these signs here, they don't have to come to the planning board.
I'm gonna leave this up to, to, to our wordsmith down here at the end of the table and ask him, does the common not indicate that that is a requirement? It does, okay, that's, that's what I thought, so I think just changing it to and, which accomplishes the same thing.
The only thing that it does is emphasizes, but dramatically, it's not correct to have the additional and.
Yeah.
Have we ever done anything dramatically correct?
No, that's why I wrote it that way, cause it is dramatically incorrect to, to put two ands in, that's it.
There, that, there are, there is another thing that I'm confused about, that, uh, it says a buts the principal egress and ingress of the property.
Yeah.
Does, does that mean the sign that, that, whatever business is on that sign has to be at, near there?
Near their right of way, where they hit or.
But we don't have that, that's not, that's not the point of these, we, we have long route one, not even near any of the businesses.
But that's not the business sign, this is, this is in the, in the DOT right of way.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was confused with number one on the top.
Which it has to be. Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they're two different things, one is the same, the, the one at the top is a blue sign, I don't know.
Okay.
Or, you know, now it's all sorts of colors.
Yeah.
You know, the blue sign, you get two signs.
Okay.
Um, now you can get up to four. This is saying you can put a sign in the right of way.
But you have to get permit, permission.
We're saying, we're, we can put a sign in that right of way, but you gotta get permission from DOT. It's gotta be special situations, cause they usually don't grant it.
Yeah, and, and it's not our call, as long as the state's alright.
Well, it is your call.
It is our call, it is your call.
But we can't grant them that without the state giving permission, that's what it is.
Just, it, it, think of it, that's why it's an off-premise sign.
Yeah. I have another question on B, back up there.
Wait a minute, before we leave that though, we're talking about the blue signs, right?
No, no, that's what I thought, that's why I was confused.
Okay.
So on B, just remind a little thing, thirty-two in parentheses, it's, what's a soiree fee, soiree fee?
Soiree fee.
Square feet, come on.
It's, it's a, it's a soiree.
It's already changed?
Yeah. It's, it's a new kind of dance, okay?
He does that quite well himself.
But getting back to the public right of way, the DOT can approve it, but we could, we could not approve it.
That's correct, and if we don't approve it, they can't have it.
This is giving you, if you don't want this free, don't, then we'll strike this, but I mean, this is to deal with situations like right in the future. Because, you know, in some places we have a, a DOT right of way that is huge.
Yeah.
And, you know, sometimes that's disadvantage, that's a disadvantage, if we can make it, there are times when.
Like VIP is a classic example.
Well, DOT has also made deals with other towns.
Yeah.
They made deals in Old Orchard Beach with businesses that put signs in their right of way, they made deals that, they'd give them easements or to sell them the land. And, but it had to be abutting too.
Yeah.
There may entrance, you couldn't put it, you couldn't put a sign for, let's say, uh, VIP up on the lawn of, or, you know, next, next to the, to the fireplace. It's gotta be close to the entrance, the object being that you're trying to provide an identification and an entrance. And the idea is, in the future, if we get a situation where we put new entrances that go back in the, the DB two district, that we have signage that can go in there and access it.
Well, I wanna go, I, I still wanna address that.
Okay.
Okay, under, under the main DOT, and again, the way the, the way this reads is, should, I think by everybody's turn, be incorrect. Let's take the last half of it and change, and then you'll see where the periods go and semicolon should go, John, I think. The planning board determines that the proposed sign location does not pose a safety hazard nor is compatible with visual continuity of adjacent signage. Signage falls under the purview of the code enforcement officer, first of all, okay?
No.
Yeah.
Some signage does, but signage, remember signage over a certain square footage is approved by the planning board.
Good.
All right, you, you.
Are we using twenty, are we using twenty square feet, four square feet, what, what are we using?
Well, I see your point, brother.
Okay.
I see your point.
So, that should be, that should be a standalone sentence, now if you put a period at the end of the other one, and, and either way this board wants to go, the board can approve it or the code enforcement, but then you need an and back at the other. I didn't get a chance to, I'm glad you guys are good at what you do.
That's a perfect sentence, I like the and because it emphasizes.
And, and it is for emphasis, you need those two, and you need this and that.
Both ands, stay.
Yeah.
Well, no, not both ands, stay.
New sentence here.
New sentence on the last one, so you drop the and and a capital.
So it's the proposed sign location does not, uh, sorry, wrong line, dude. A sign easement is grant, and a sign easement is granted by the main department of transportation, period. The planning board determines that the proposed.
Must determine.
Well, that's still my question, I, I.
Well, I think, what, what you're doing is you're providing, remember, this is, this is a very unusual situation, in a way the planning board is providing a waiver from our usual standard, that's what's happening. It's saying that we'll let you put it in, because right now we're saying off-premises signs, unless you're a, a farm, you know, not a farm, a temporary farm stand, or you're putting up the MDOT blue sign, you can't put a sign on anybody else's property, and you can't put it in the MDOT right of way. But we're saying, well, you know, we're gonna just cover this one little base that you can put in the MDOT right of way, if MDOT says you'll, they'll let you do it, and the planning board thinks, yeah, this'll work. So it's out of the code enforcement and officers' hands, it's out of the staff reviews' hands, it's strictly into the planning board's hands in this situation.
So, so.
So it's sort of, it, it's a special situation, I would, I would guess you'll probably get word through the entire history of.
But I think that last sentence has to be worse.
Well, I don't think it, I don't, I'm not sure that it does, I think we could bullet point all four of the steps and say that it must meet all four of these conditions, is provided the proposed sign location meets the following criteria. A, it abuts the principal ingress egress to the property. B, a sign easement is granted by main DOT. Three, the planning board determines that the proposed sign location does not pose a safety hazard.
And is a continuity.
And D is compatible.
And D is compatible with visual continuity of the adjusted, uh, adjacent signage. I think if you, if you bullet pointed them, you'd have them all right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so you wanna bullet it?
And make, and say that they must meet all of the criteria.
If you agree with that, I'll change it right now.
That work for you, Bob?
Yeah, it's the same thing.
It is the same.
It's the same.
Well, we could, we could leave it the same too.
A, B, C, and D, I don't care, I just, I, I conceived at one point, and the, the other is now very clear that I think is good, so I'm okay.
Well, let's move on.
I just clarify that.
Sorry, 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 sorry to be such a pain.
No, that's good.
Let's take a look at.
There was the fourth option, which was, can the whole thing.
Take it out.
Oh yeah, no, I know.
Let's take a look at temporary signs, we'll do, deal with number one, windows and posters. Okay, the following temporary signs may be permitted and exempt from size and dimensional requirements of the zoning district, provided the signage does not pose a safety hazard and meets all of the relevant conditions prescribed herein. Window posters, temporary signage placed inside of a building, inside of building windows announcing community events, provided the signage is removed within five days following the event.
I have a question, why, why do we care, what's, um, seriously, is there something we have to work out for yet?
Well, who's gonna enforce it?
Right.
It's not, it's not gonna be.
Five days?
It's not gonna, window, you know, just allow window posters.
Temporary things were meant.
Well, you know, remember, you have temporary signs that, you know, right now, you have it so that it's, you know, the, temporary signs have to be, you know, you only have so many days.
Hundred and fifty, but, but that's.
No, no, that's for the other ones.
That's outside.
That's off-premises.
That's off-premises, and there's banners outside, this is banners inside.
But, but if, for the inside.
Fine, you wanna get rid of it, I'm, I'm, one less thing I have to worry about.
I don't know, I don't know.
Well, no, if you get rid of it, then it's not allowed, remember.
It's a window poster, it takes, okay.
I don't know if it's, if it's saying, cause it's inside, we're not, the.
Yeah.
We do have, we do have a limitation on, on the amount of, of window area that you can put a sign in.
Well, that, I can understand.
If we leave that there, we don't go for enforcement, what does this make?
And why would a business owner wanna leave an old, um, just flea market sign or something, or bean supper sign, three months?
Yeah, why would they leave it there? So it's just another, so window, so window posters allowed, and, and when it, it's announcing some kind of community event, time-sensitive, correct?
Right, okay.
Temporary signs placed inside of a buil, of building windows announcing community events, and take the rest of it out.
Right.
Cause you're right, cause you're not gonna leave something up there from nineteen eighty-four, unless you're announcing nineteen eighty-four.
It's not a shop business.
It's one last thing that, that the codes enforcement officer has to drive himself nuts over.
That's crazy.
Okay? Business holiday displays.
So I'm taking, I provided the signage is removed for five days.
Within five days, yes, okay, good, cause I can't enforce that anymore.
Then, simple.
Temporary holiday lighting, outdoor displays, and other decoration of buildings or structures during the holiday season when such decoration is customary.
That's kind of squishy.
Why?
Luke, why?
Why, well, how do you define holiday, how do you define customary?
Well, in Maine, it's customary to leave your Christmas decorations up all year.
It's a holiday every day, it's somewhere, so.
I didn't say, I didn't say Christmas.
If you have Ramadan lights.
Could be forced to go out during Ramadan.
Exactly, I was just gonna say the same thing, I know somebody wants to put up Ramadan lights, and then let them put them up.
But customary.
They custom, they put up a Ramadan.
Where?
Yeah, I, I don't mean, John, but.
It's the custom of the holiday, not the custom of the location, it's the custom of the holiday. At Christmas, we put up Christmas lights, at Easter, we throw the Easter bunny out there, don't ask me why, we think a bunny lays chocolate eggs, but nonetheless, we do.
It is chocolate, I haven't seen white ones yet come from a rabbit.
And we wouldn't want to, we wouldn't allow the, the, what is that, uh, Christmas tree shop, because it's got Christmas decorations up all the time?
It's a retail location, it's not a, it's not a holiday display, that's a retail shop.
Wait a minute.
A holiday display, it's basically saying, see, you know, in some cases, if you put up Merry Christmas, that can be called a sign.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, you, you know, you put up Happy Easter, Happy Hanukkah, whatever, hey, that's a sign, you don't have a permit for that.
Yeah.
That, this is trying to protect those things, like, it, it's like having a, a date on your house.
You mean like Saint Patty's Day?
Date on your historic house, well, that's a sign.
Uh, Saint Patty's Day?
Saint Patty's Day, sure.
Yeah.
How about Halloween?
Yeah. Fine.
Valentine's Day.
How about Martin Luther King Day, what are you gonna put up for that one?
It's a holiday every day.
You're right, they're, they're our calendars that indicate that, that certain days are holidays, and if you wanna get banners and put it up and celebrate that day.
If you can get excited about, you know, if you can get excited about.
Bolivia in Independence Day.
July seventeenth is National Book Holiday Day, go ahead.
I think we're gonna have to do it, a little bit of trust in it, that people know.
Okay. Yeah, that's a.
Just bringing it up, making sure.
Yeah, it's a good, good point, right.
Just trying to also make sure that we don't prevent it from occurring, that's the point.
Real estate.
Surely we don't prevent people.
I don't think we should allow holidays at all.
Okay, well, that's.
That's kind of what they.
Real estate signs advertising the sale of a property on a non-illuminated sign not exceeding an aggregate total of eight square feet in residential districts and fifteen square feet in business districts, and all signs shall be removed from the premises within two days following the transfer of the property.
As if anybody was down.
Yes, I know.
But at least it, it's a guide.
Come on, Marie, get those signs.
It's not enforceable, though, I mean, as long as you know.
When Marie sells a property, she takes it down quickly so she can put it on the next property she sells.
Right, cause she only has one time.
Marie, is that okay with you, two days, you want ten days?
If I'm allowed to speak, I mean, two days is ridiculously small in my business.
I'm not sure where two days can.
Yeah, because you also wanna advertise that it's sold by.
Make it ten days, you want.
I'd say ten days.
Ten days.
In two days.
But I'm just here to type what you guys said.
Thirty days.
We're asking expert input.
Thirty days.
I was cringing at the two days.
Yeah.
I, maybe if, because the, the new tenants may not move in.
Why not say two weeks?
That's fine.
Four, I mean, fourteen days is not a lot of time.
But no one's gonna enforce it.
I don't have it anyway. What it does, it gives Jim, if somebody's keeping a sign up forever, you know, it just, it gives them, it gives them something.
Then I think if you're gonna write it down, you should write thirty days, the big difference between thirty days and forever, cause ten days might be too short.
Yeah, but if it goes thirty days, no one's probably gonna notice, okay?
No, but it's advertised in the house, was sold by what realtor.
Well, I'll tell you this right now, the sign up at my house has been up for two months, and I want it gone, but it's buried in the snow.
Well, it's kind of frozen.
Yeah, right, yeah, you can.
I'm calling the code enforcement officer.
The guy drove in the other day.
Why do you take it out?
He drove in the other day.
I would, I would tell you, if we took that sign out, uh, that last sentence, all signs shall be removed, I don't think it would create a big problem. Even if, cause if you left it, the owner's gonna get upset sooner, they keep, keep trying to buy my house.
Right.
Yeah.
Which is what's already happened to me.
Okay.
They drug, I've had people drive in already.
Yeah.
I mean, I've, I've bought homes where they didn't come and get their sign in, they actually took them out and threw them on the ground.
That's right.
Can't, I can't get to it, it's frozen.
Well, yeah, you can't, no.
You can do, don't you have a rope?
Okay, to keep this moving, are we gonna put a time limit on it?
Yank it out with it, ain't like the tunnel.
Do we put a time limit on it, or do we take it out?
Yeah, give me, give me thirty days, give me two weeks, thirty days, something like that.
Two weeks.
Thirty days?
Okay, thirty days. Thirty days, cause you know what's gonna happen, this is what happens in the enforcement world. Jim says, okay, that's been up for, you know, like, two months, all right, you only got thirty days, so now you have thirty days to take it down, okay? Then they done, they say, okay, we're gonna start ADK action in thirty days.
Yeah.
You know, this, it, you know, everything is thirty days in the enforcement world, so it's six months before the sign thing occurs, it's basically what happens.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yep, okay.
So when you say two days, you know, frankly, it's not coming down for four months.
Community festivals, carnival, special events.
So thirty days.
Any sign erected by a business charitable organization or public organization directly associated with a public festival, carnival, or special community event approved by the board of selectmen.
That's a mass gathering situation.
Yeah, and they need a permit for that. Everybody happy with it?
No, 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 no limits or anything, like banners, um.
Well, how do you do that with like Smokey's greatest shows, everything's a sign of that.
Yeah, but he's not there that long.
No, it's, it's temporary.
How many years, how many years do you think it's gonna take seasonal cottages to get? To completion. Seven, ten years, but they're only allowed the project sign for two.
Continuing.
Well, right, you, you need the project.
No, the U is the word continuing.
That's for, yeah, but we, we've jumped, let's look at the community. Are you guys happy with, with the mass gathering side of it?
Yeah, works, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I did jump, I'm sorry, I gotta.
It's okay. Yard sales, garage sales, non-illuminated signs advertising a yard sale or garage sale only on a residential property, provided all signage is removed within forty-eight hours of the termination of the yard sale.
Couldn't a business have going out a business sale, like say Marty, say Marty and he was selling.
It's not a yard sale.
That's not, and, and this is only on residential property.
The reason why you do that is because you'll have commercial, merch sales, professional yards.
Did, did we not just say we could have them in?
Yes, we did.
A certain area of town?
Yeah, we did for resident, because we have residences in those.
You're gonna have them also in a commercial, cause we said we could turn around and have a, a yard sale at Weir's or any other business along Route what?
You wanna do that?
We said it already.
No, we said yard sales, but that was for the residential uses.
No, it was, cause it was brought up.
I think it was. I don't, I don't remember if we restricted it or not.
It wasn't restricted.
I'd have, I'd have to go back and look, cause I honestly do not remember. But in this instance, this is a, in a residential property.
Now, let's stick with that, residential.
And they have to take it out within forty-eight hours.
That's reasonable.
That's reasonable.
Yep. Project sign, non-illuminated signs announcing an approved and impending land development project, enlisting the consultants and contractors involved in the project. Project signs shall be limited to one sign per site and shall not exceed thirty-two square feet in sign area and the sign duration limit of two years.
Wrong.
See, I think, I, I think for us historically, projects have been two years, if we get any of these big development, if, I mean.
It's a good point.
And seasonal is a good one, cause I, I mean, I thought maybe ten years with, with that one going out. And they, what they'll do with these project signs sometimes is during different phases of the development, they have to, they'll highlight the construction crews they're doing the work with. They'll highlight the next group that's doing the next one. So, those are, for business purposes, those are, those, those are important to generate interest in the site and the activity.
How about this? How about this, some, you know, the two years isn't bad, I don't, you know, uh, removed within one year completion of the project.
Yeah, see, that, I, I would, that would make, that would make a lot of sense.
Because, and we know when that is, because we usually have to close it out.
Yeah, and we approve it, it is determined, or the staff reviewed it, right?
Yeah, no, yeah, because, you know, I've gotta close out the, uh, uh, usually the performance.
Guarantees.
Guarantees, and I have to do the final, draw down the final spectrum.
Yeah, but what happens if we turn, they haven't turned out? Didn't find a one like turn that one, the road wasn't paved.
Or they didn't complete.
Yeah.
And it went years.
We're not gonna do that again.
No, I'm.
I know, but we're not gonna do that.
That's why we're getting all of the guarantees now.
Asking a question.
Yeah, that, that means, Marie, what you're saying is, what we need to do is, we need to have a little better rigorous enforcement of, of these projects, we gotta, we gotta monitor them more, agreed?
We're not doing better.
Okay.
But, uh, just one question on this, on the one year, is that?
That's better for business.
Is, why would they need one year if it's already complete? That's pretty much about the project, not about the business.
I don't think that they'll leave it up there for the year, I think they'll, they'll have it down within.
Or even say six months, he's saying everything is, everything is thirty days, thirty days, thirty days.
I think six months sounds.
I think that, I'll think they'll have it down in plenty of time, I don't think we'll ever have the issue, but it's a good idea to have a timeframe in it that says, oh, get it out of here.
Because, you know, it's in, in, in a way, you know, what Marty's talking about is a situation where you do have a failed project, which we do get. You get a failed project, and they, they can leave the sign up forever, and it just starts falling down, it's not maintained, and it's time for it to go. And this is, this is ammo to do that.
Then you would wanna say with the, with, within abandonment or completion.
Well, we do have something for abandonment signs.
Yeah.
That's at front, remember, that's one of the first things on sign maintenance.
Yeah.
Which we're missing before, which we really need now.
Yeah, we, we took care of that.
We took care of that.
So, we wouldn't need it here then, because we've already taken care of it, we, if the, if the sign is abandoned, it starts to come undone.
We can dig it.
It can, it can be taken out.
So, let's just make, let's, let's just put it in six months after completion of the project.
Sure.
And if it fails like Marty's talking about, then we get them on the, on the failed, the failed, uh, the sign falling apart.
Could you say closure instead of completion, cause if it's closed because of non-performance? Does that work? And completion would still be closure, you're still closing off the project.
Yeah, I like that.
Completion or com- or closure.
Closure.
Completion.
Completion or closure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause there are two.
Because closure, I could see in the future, a future plan, we're going, what the hell's closure?
Yeah, right.
Closure.
Yeah.
Completion tells you what that pretty much means.
Okay, here, here's a good question then, how would you per se address a subdivision that may have had a sign on it? But never did it, you know, like the one over on the Thompson Road, okay?
Yeah.
They could've still had a sign up all this time.
Yep.
As long as they were still an active project.
And, and you're right, Marty, under the current ordinance, they could, this, this will help take care of that.
Well, wait a minute, no, what he's saying is, he's basically saying it's gotta be for active projects.
Right, but that's, that's the completion or closure.
No.
Side of the line.
This is never active.
Here's the one good thing, Marty. If we start enforcing what we have in our subdivision ordinance right now, which we really haven't been doing, if somebody doesn't start the project in two years, by, by our regulations and by state law.
They're gonna come back in front of us.
That, that's, no, it's gone.
It's voided.
Right, they're gonna start over.
You understand, I'm saying they get started all over again, right?
Uh, well, the, first of all, we, what this board is supposed to do, and, you know, we did it for Jimmy Jones by request. Is this board tells, tells the registry of deeds, yank that subdivision. We send the letter, which is what we had to do, notarized and so forth, yank that subdivision, cause they never, they never finished it, but we haven't been tracking it, now we're gonna start tracking it.
What about the one, will, will be fluff had for nineteen year?
Well, we've already had that discussion, I've had that discussion with those folks there, they know the situation there.
Right.
And now I have the same problem with the Rundle keep, the guys in the Rundle keep are the ones I've been dealing with for the last.
But that wasn't written, that wasn't written.
It wasn't written, there's no reprofessing, but it was for a Rundle keep.
But does, does the current regulation take care of that as far as signage?
No. No.
It doesn't seem to.
That's, that's something that we can address, it is after nine o'clock, we need to honor our commitment to the chief.
Yeah.
Who wants us out of here? We'll start with five sixteen eight, the commercial banners next week, and we'll deal with the issue of. Storage units in DB two.
All right, so the agenda's, cause I gotta post it, I'm not gonna be here for almost a half, post it Monday at the very latest, am I posted tonight?
Yeah, you're gonna have.
So, tell me what you want on the agenda for Thursday. I've got, I've got a post of sidewalk, and then, are we, are we just the same stuff we have right now?
The, the three items that we have on again?
Yeah, yeah.
Just those, just those three items and the sidewalk, okay, we're here again, and we're here, cause I can't get the room.
The historic society's taking both the conference room and the library, everything.
Yeah, they're more important than us.
Like to make a motion, we adjourn?
No.
I don't know, planners business, I'm sorry.
No.
Nothing new, I will have some, uh, I will have some communications I will distribute to you, I don't know what happened to them right now, but I will get them to you, uh, Monday, okay?
Question.
Yes, sir.
When I had asked you about Blue Moon.
Yeah.
Okay. It, it's the. One who can't make up their mind what they're gonna do, is that one of the owners?
I don't know. I don't know if they're an owner, I'm getting the secondhand, Marie.
That's why I've been trying to ask you if it was like Ray or whatever else that.
It's been secondhand, so that's why I haven't used names, cause I, I don't know.
I mean, gee.
I'm, I'm just hearing the secondhand, because there's been some confusion as to what they're going to be doing, and, and, and I'm not directly involved in it, so I shouldn't even be saying anything, that's a personal officer.
I mean, it's a business, that's why I've inquired.
Yeah, and it's one that I'm, I'm interested, you know, I've already told the code enforcement officer, the uses that they're proposing to do there are permitted uses. This planning board will have nothing to do with it, uh, this site plan review committee, uh, will have no authority over it either. Unless they make physical changes to the parking lot, or because of their expansion of the number of, of seats, that they don't have adequate parking, they have to increase it. Otherwise, it's a permitted use, they can go in there and they don't need to come to us at all, just like the folks in the carpet store did not have to come here. Remember, they would've had to in the old days, so what you've done in, in your permitted uses and conditional uses is actually been very beneficial in starting to.
More business friendly.
To go in the way they're supposed to.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I.
What?
I think, uh, you know, we, I, I don't know when that's going to be, but we should schedule that, and we should, we should notify them that.
We need to, at some point, the attorney wants to have an executive session with us about some stuff that's going on. So, the town planner is going to work up a date as to when that could possibly happen, it'll have to be at one of our meetings.
Yeah.
But. He'll, he'll work that up and he'll let us know when it's gonna work out.
It has to be relative, I assume, too.
Yeah.
Be one of the special meeting nights, not the regular scheduled?
I would say so, because it's probably gonna take time.
Yeah.
All right, any other business to talk?
Anything else?
I have, uh, no, I, I've been pretty much working with applicants all week, um, and we're moving along as, as you know, uh, we do have. I did have a meeting, I don't know if I reported this last time, it happened a couple of weeks ago, so it's, I do have two businesses that are coming in. Uh, one's gonna be in the BI district.
You had mentioned that.
Okay, never mind, then I have nothing.
No, you didn't, you, it was all talk, but nothing else?
No, these folks are, these folks have an option on a piece of property, and, uh, they've sat down and, and met with the assessor, myself and the code enforcement officer. They don't have the uses, they know what they have to do, they're gonna have to get a site plan approval, they'll have to get, uh, conditional use, but uses are permitted uses in that particular district. So, they're gonna be going for site plan with us, and it's, uh, gonna be a fairly, it's not huge, you know, but it's about twelve thousand square feet.
What type of business?
It's gonna be retail and service. Retail, so it's actually gonna be a, an existing business.
That's permitted, now not any change?
No, no changes, the only thing that's gonna be site planned is it's only, it's, it's rolling. They're, they're coming from Sanford, so it's another business that's, that's relocating here because of our location, and, um, they wanna do some aggressive. Their clients are basically in the ninety-five quarter, so they're moving closer to their clients, and, uh, they're pretty, uh, they have significant business. They're going to be building also additional rental space as part of the project, and they're also looking at self storage.
Well, that's good up there, that's, that's allowed up there.
That's what we're using that district, so.
That's a good use there, I, yeah, it's.[1701.95]